This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Meeting of the Community Relations Committee. This is a work, working session. But we continue to thank East Hampton Media for posting our recordings on YouTube. All past meetings of the CRC can be found on East Hampton's media YouTube account for viewing at any time. For members of the public that would like to reach out to the CRC, we can be reached at CRC@easthamptonma.gov. In this disclaimer, all committee members and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic, as permitted by Chapter 20 of the Massachusetts Act of 2021 entitled, "An Act Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted by the State of Emergency and Signed into Law" on June 16th, 2021 by Governor Baker. I guess I can go on with the mission statement? Okay. So, for those viewing, I'd like to start this meeting by sharing the committee's mission statement before we begin our work. Our mission is to promote positive relations throughout East Hampton's diverse population. We will build a sense of inclusion, community, and pride where community members feel welcome, accepted, and valued. All right, and we'll begin with a roll call. So Rebecca Prassa.
Here.
Emily Britton.
Here.
Margaret Kirstein. Jan Norman.
Here.
Ebenezer Akakuma.
Yeah.
Okay, and Myra Oyedemi. All right. So, I believe on our agenda, item number two, which I don't have in front of me, is a discussion with Dr. Lumax Campbell. So, first, thank you for being with us here today. Dr. Campbell, well, you can see our, we're glad to have you here on this Friday, on this snow day, to discuss with us a bit about the Undoing Racism workshops. We're really excited to hear about it, and it was kind of a highlight of our last meeting in part of our strategic plan. Last, two days ago, we just said that we would like to listen a bit to, to hear a little bit more about undoing racism and frame this as a listening and perhaps some question sessions, so that we can move forward in that plan. So I will give the floor to everyone and happily listen, take notes, and ask for questions.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Is there a certain instruction that you want to have me work from? Or a certain point in time you want us to start from?
I, I sent you an email, perhaps not with a lot of lead time before this meeting.
I saw it.
That email has some questions. You know, I think overall, well, see, our agenda item says, "We would like to discuss anticipated follow-up to the Undoing Racism Community Organizing Workshops held by the City of East Hampton." "We'd like to discuss the potential and needed planning for further workshops of this kind, and the role of the Community Relations Committee in supporting these activities." So I think first, we would love to hear, maybe you could, even if you've told us in the past, tell us again what East Hampton has done with the Undoing Racism workshops and where that effort stands.
Okay, I just switched earbuds because the other one was starting to die. I've been on call since nine o'clock this morning. Okay, so I'll start by just kind of giving some background. I know I met with you all on November 9th, so I attended your November 9th meeting, and we talked about what next in that meeting. So I'll do a little recap from what I mentioned that night. For starters, I began working with the City of East Hampton back in October 2019, so about 17, uh, 2020. So about 17 months ago, in the first year of the pandemic, I ended up coming over for a four-day weekend, Friday through Monday, meeting with a number of different stakeholders to try to understand what the current state of East Hampton was, what were the pain points, what were the aspirations, so that I can begin to leverage my past 20 years of experience in workforce, business, economic, and community development to help strategize for moving forward in East Hampton, as you all tried to figure out how to weather the storm of COVID. And as early as the report that I rendered in December 2020, I was already recommending community engagement, community education, and beginning to develop a common analysis of this thing called structural and systemic racism, and had indicated that the Undoing Racism Workshop was by far one of the best, most real workshops that I ever been through in my life. And, you know, I've looked like this all of my life, I've been black all my life. And so for a black person to say that it was real and it wasn't just checking boxes or just a bunch of definitions like stereotype threat and implicit bias, that means something. And I had been through the workshop myself at that point in time, maybe seven times. I'm preparing to sit through and be a part of another workshop next week with a group of folks here in my hometown of Rochester, New York, which will be my 10th workshop. And so when I mentioned that, it was like, if you want to do culturally relevant, community-based economic development, community development, business development in East Hampton, there needs to be a common lens that understands the issues and that you all can work from. So fast forward, last year, I did a nine-month contract with the State of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, where I was a part of the Rapid Recovery Plan Initiative funded by the Baker Alito-Polito Agenda. It was a $10 million program where I was assigned East Hampton and Holyoke to write recovery plans for. In that plan, I recommended that Holyoke and East Hampton facilitated Undoing Racism workshops as a part of the baselining of community engagement, relationship building, understanding where the hurt was, and beginning to build a common analysis across the community to begin to tackle some of these issues to shared economic prosperity. Are you all following me? I know I'm saying a lot. And so in the midst of doing what ended up being a 54-page report that was turned over to Marila Chappelle in November of last year, she decided to go ahead and use some of the funds that she had set aside for economic development work to fund two workshops. And the thought was, if you did a virtual workshop, because of the way Zoom works, you can generally have about 25 to 29 screens on one screen at the same time. And the People's Institute for Survival and Beyond, because of the intimacy of this 18-hour, three-day virtual workshop, they really want to be able to see everybody on one screen. Whereas if we were in person doing this workshop, I've been in workshops down in Austin, Texas, where there were about 47 of us in the room. But it's hard to have that same level of connection here in Google Meet. So with that, the People's Institute generally capped those workshops at about 23 to 25 people, because it's going to be those 23 to 25 people plus three multicultural organizers who are doing the facilitation, which if you had 25 people in a room, that puts you at 28. You're kissing that 29 before you're pushing people over to another screen. So that's some of the, you know, nuance there. Anyhow, we did the workshops. One was initially scheduled to take place in July. The other was scheduled to take place in, I'm kind of ignoring a call here, so I can tell them I'll talk to them later. The other one was going to take place in August. And at the time, I was still working on a lot of the organizing and conversations for that 54-page report. So my thinking was, by fall, you should probably plan to do a follow-up meeting sometime in October, because in my mind's eye, the Rapid Recovery Plan would have been finished. We could have given all of the graduates of the three-day workshop a copy of the final report. We could have gotten feedback, and we could have kind of moved from there. Well, it just so happened, the entire state got off course, and that project wasn't wrapped up until the last week of October. And you all got the final copy of it the first week of November. And so the idea of doing a follow-up workshop in October was completely a non-possibility, if that makes sense. And so now, fast forward, I met with you all on November 19th, uh, November 9th, I'm looking at my notes here, November 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the thought was, we were going to try to get all of the alumni back to the table, or all of the people who attended the workshop back to the table, to debrief, what did we cover in those three days? What were the tools? And I don't want to steal anybody's thunder before you have a chance to go through the training. But the idea was, the different tools that were introduced for organizing, we wanted to recap that and talk through what the experience was like. And maybe that wasn't one workshop, maybe there were several meetings that needed to happen. The first to get the emotional and the memory and reflective experience of what it was like going through that workshop. Maybe another subsequent follow-up workshop was to say, "Let's take all of those days' worth of activities." I think there were nine or 12 different organizing tools and techniques that you were exposed to in the workshop. And let's walk through them one by one, and let's break them down. And let's say, what is the purpose of this particular tool in organizing as organizers? Now, as the CRC, your job is to organize around salient issues in the community, mobilize the community around those issues, and try to advance change, right? Or at least make recommendations for change. So allowing you all to become intimately familiar with those nine to 12 tools, and then do another workshop to introduce you to two or three tools that weren't even able to be covered in the workshop, like Dr. Edwin J. Nichols' Philosophical Aspects of Cultural Difference, or the Anti-Racist Strategy Chart, that would allow you to actually go from, "We have a plan, let's move it to action." That doesn't always get covered in those three days, because you're jamming a lot, and you want to make space for people to express themselves in those three days. So I want to say, Myra, you reached out in January trying to get clarity on where was, where were we at with this, right? And as I understand it from talking with Marila Chappelle between kind of October and December, as CRC was beginning to stand in the gap, the expectation was, this is the community body, community-facing body. You know, let's work with them and let them provide the leadership to move things forward. She had committed to pay for additional workshops, because she had articulated to me that you all were restricted to about a $10,000 budget. And I'll be candid, the workshop is going to cost $13,500 for up to 25 people to go through it. So she couldn't possibly expect you all to be responsible for paying that with a $10,000 budget. So she would pay that for you. And the question that I put to Myra was, what would you all want to accomplish between, say, when we spoke in, Myra, I can't remember, we spoke in late January or early February? When you were trying to get clarity on some email chain going back and forth, I said, "Well, if you want to do a couple of things, I'm happy to work with you." The first thing was, get the 50, a little less than 50 people who have already gone through the workshop, get them to a debrief. And two of you from your, from your CRC have gone through the workshops. Only two of you really do yourselves justice by participating in a debrief. For Jan to be in a debrief and he haven't gone through the workshop, it would spoil his experience trying to go through the workshop. The second thing would be to do a follow-up to that debrief, and then get into those tools to know what they are, how to leverage them, and when to leverage them, so that you all become better organizers of your community. And then after that, do another follow-up workshop where we go over the two or three tools that haven't been covered from the original training. In the midst of that, the thought was, could you have pulled off, and this was in January, the thought was, could we pull off an Undoing Racism Workshop during this fiscal year? Which would look at April, May, June, late April, May, June. This was back in January when we were having these email exchanges. So that the rest of the CRC, plus however many community members could further fill those slots up to 25, go through another Undoing Racism Workshop, and then we start the debrief cycle again, and the follow-on again. All the while, forming an alumni network of folks who've gone through that training that you can tap on for reviewing and renewing your energy around how to use these organizing tools. But this also becomes a bench that the CRC can tap on to help advancing your strategic plan. So that was the original vision, thought that we were talking through, Myra and I. And the last time we spoke, the opposite was a better thought. What if we can get the rest of the CRC, plus additional community members through a workshop, and then have all of you come together for the debrief, the follow-on, and the, and the other organizing activities? And so that's what we were left off with. And what does success look like, before we go to Emily? I think success looks like making sure that everyone that has this experience knows how to make the most of what they gain from the experience. That's the first thing. The second thing is, my understanding is that you all don't have a completed strategic plan just yet. And I kind of volunteered to, through this process, assist you all with finalizing your strategic plan. And then taking that plan and decomposing it into a series of actionable plans, so that you can then run with it. $10,000 is not enough to do what you all want to do. But in absence of numbers, and absence of an agenda that says, "We want to do these three things or these five things, and it's going to take this much time, it's going to take this many people, and it's going to take this much money." Without having that, you can't ask for an appropriate budget. So that's a very important thing for you all to put in place as a result of going through what I'm seeing as this process. Emily?
Hi. Yes, I'm unmuted, right? Yeah. So I just wanted to go back to understand, I have so many questions, forgive me.
Take your time.
First one is, you said in October 2020, you came to East Hampton to understand the state of affairs here, and to help strategize. Who did you meet with? And who?
Oh, boy. So Marila Chappelle found me because I was a moderator on an international panel for an organization called Sourcelink, which is your Blueprint East Hampton platform. I'm also a client of theirs. And we had launched that platform about a year before you all launched. And so I moderated a panel on building inclusive entrepreneurial ecosystems. Then I was at a Kaufman Foundation Summit, which was a two-day summit virtually during the beginning of COVID, and was very vocal in that space, and Marila Chappelle heard me in both spaces. And then, in addition to that, National League of Cities partnered with Kaufman Foundation on a public sector innovation program called CIE Innovation Ecosystems. And I was also a prominent feature in that space. And so she said, "Who is this guy? We need his brain and his time and his experience in East Hampton." So that's how she found me. I met with her, and I met with Casey Corcello for a few calls between late September and early October. And when I came over, I met with her senior leadership team, seven of your nine city councilors, Mo Beliveau from the Chamber, Dee Dice at the time from the CDC, I believe. I met with the head of your business association. Uh, no, 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 I met with Owen. Owen's a city councillor. I met with someone who was connected to an insurance agency. We had dinner at Galaxy, I met with several business owners, I met with Nicole Hendricks, I met with the chief of police and two or three lieutenants, I met with Akin. Like, I met with some of everybody. I met about 34 people in about 20 hours between noon on Friday and 2:30 p.m. on Monday. And then I wrote a 10-page report summarizing four pages worth of themes of what's wrong in East Hampton, the history of East Hampton, what are people's dreams for East Hampton, and what were some of the dynamics that could make or break anything getting done in East Hampton? And then I rendered six pages worth of recommended strategies. So that was the original output from a 20-hour, four-day weekend meeting with a bunch of people.
Did, did anyone ever mention the CRC?
Well, I think, yeah, of course.
Okay.
It was definitely mentioned.
Were you invited to that? Margaret and Rebecca, were you guys both in that work group? Were you invited to that?
No.
I think this was early yet, wasn't it? Like, CRC was very early.
It predates the work group.
No, I, um, no, I don't believe so. I think also, there were times when we weren't meeting. So you're talking about October of 2020, I think we were meeting then, for sure. So.
Anyway.
I can't really think back that far, I think, but in any case.
Okay.
I'm surprised that I remember all of that stuff I just shared.
I know, I know. There's a lot of people. It's unfortunate that, that we have the job we have and that we weren't there. Anyway, so.
Let's just stick a pin in that, Emily. You mean as a formal body that you weren't there?
Yeah, yeah. Because that's, because our job is to help figure out how to, you know, improve relationships in our community and to hear the issues. So you were hearing the issues from a bunch of people that we didn't even get to hear from.
Let me ask you this, though. Are you focused on economic development or business development as a primary focus?
No.
So then you wouldn't have been in the room.
Okay.
Because the focus was economic development and business development.
Okay, okay.
And a barrier to business and economic development was the community challenges of the relationship at the time with, you know, your Black Lives Matter group and law enforcement. So that was naturally a fringe matter, but it wasn't the reason I came. Because at the time, my job was Director of the Mayor's Office of Community Wealth Building in the City of Rochester. So I was there talking about wealth building and ecosystem building.
Ah, okay, okay. That helps.
So I, oh, yeah, that was appropriate as to why you weren't there as a formal body.
Okay, okay. Next question, you said that, like, things kind of changed. You were, you were like working for the state of Massachusetts, you were assigned to East Hampton and Holyoke. You gave the reports to the mayor, you said it was 54-page reports.
You have it.
Blah, blah, blah. And then you said, "Follow-up became a non-possibility." I don't understand, who, who told you follow-up was a non-possibility?
Let me be very specific. Initially, when the state rolled this program out, it was supposed to run from the beginning of February until the end of June. Then the state expanded it until the end of August. Then the state moved it out to mid-September. Then they moved it out to the third week of October, because they realized that what they were trying to accomplish was overly ambitious for the amount of time that had been allotted. Trying to run that while trying to organize follow-up workshops to Undoing Racism Training, it just wasn't possible to do both. And at the time, I had submitted my resignation from my day job, so I can do this business full-time that I run called Third Eye Network. So it was just too many things going on at once, and no one was actually, from a East Hampton side of things, no one was primarily focused on pulling you all back together. There was no appointed body where, where Jan or Rebecca was the lead organizer on pulling together a debrief. So I think it just fell through the cracks. And also, we were in the middle of a, of an election cycle in East Hampton.
Right, right.
So I mean, like, let's, let's, let's put everything in context.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then I wanted to ask, so, so the follow-up or a debrief after three days is not included in that $13,000?
No.
Okay, okay. So it's an extra $13,000?
No.
Oh, okay. What is the follow-up cost?
That was what we were trying to do this meeting for, to figure out what your budget was, what you wanted to accomplish, and then try to do a proposal, so that you all can decide on how best to go forward. Let's go all the way back. My understanding was that, when we got together tonight, the goal was to try to figure out the path forward, not litigate the past. And so because of that, what I need to understand is, what is the scope of what you want to accomplish? What's the timeline that you want to accomplish it? If there is a budget associated with it, or if you want to do a bid process, however you want to do that, you can do that too. But once we know what success looked like, scope, schedule, and cost, I could prepare something for you to react to. But without having something to react to, anything I suggest is a shot in the dark. I know that you have $10,000 for your whole year, for your whole entity, and I know that the mayor has agreed to and willing to pay for at least one or two additional workshops. I also know that you need about three months from the time you say, "I want to do a workshop," and the days where the workshop actually happens. Because, one, the trainer's got to be available to do it. Two, you got to set up the registration content in order for people to, to register for it. Three, you have to actually organize and get people to register, so you got to promote it. And four, you have to actually, excuse me, you have to actually, like, go through the process of contracting with the service provider who's going to actually find trainers to actually staff it. And so that takes about a good two to three months, because they do about 35 of these workshops per month. And they're normally booking out three weeks, uh, three months at a time. So right now, coming into March 1st, I could conceivably see, say, March, April, end of May is probably the earliest you can do an additional workshop in this fiscal year with this fiscal year's budget from the mayor. And you could essentially immediately following that, schedule a series of debriefs with all of the people who've gone through the two workshops, or the three workshops by that time, and still accomplish that before June 30th, which is the end of your fiscal year. That would be my recommendation.
Margaret?
Ms. Margaret?
Well, I think that was my biggest question, actually, what you're talking about, which is, you know, for me, wanting to know what other people's experiences have been. Those were the questions I submitted to you through Rebecca the other day. Knowing what their experiences have been, and all of the things you talked about, what did we cover? Different tools were taught, you know, blah, blah, blah. Would be really important if we want to invite different players to come to the next Undoing Racism Training. I feel like that data would be really important. So that's why my question was, has the People's Institute, or is there a capacity for the People's Institute to collect some data? Or has the People's Institute collected data? So that's.
That was your question. That was your question.
And if not, what you think about us trying to collect data, coming up with a questionnaire that isn't about, but it would, I think the, the debriefing. I call it reunion. I didn't know exactly what word to use, but in any case, the follow-up. That is really important to have happened, but I really think the Undoing Racism workshops are important to have happened. And I, I hate to have, to see them, you know, strung out over the next four, five, six months.
I can respect that. Lot of good questions, Margaret, I appreciate them. First, I want to say I provided the, the registration lists to Myra and Rebecca back in December or January. So every last person who registered, I want to say there was some attrition. Maybe four or five people between the two sessions did not show up. For whatever reasons, right? Like, things change, life happens. But if you wanted to set up a Google form, since you're using Google Meets, if you wanted to do a Google form that basically said, you know, first name, last name, email address, did you attend the Undoing Racism Workshop? Yes, no, or unsure? What dates did you attend? Put the dates from August, and we ended up moving the July one to October, the first three days of October. So which dates did you attend? Do some open fields that say, what did you get most out of it? What did you least enjoy about it? What do you wish you would have got, like, whatever? You know, how have you benefited or learned from it? And then email that link to, to, to take that out to that distribution list. You all could do it, I could do it, we can team up on it as a part of the scope of work. But that would be important information.
I'd even like to hear, well, who they think would benefit from attending it, for example.
Oh, it's for everybody.
You know, no, but, but if we're looking for 25 new bodies or 15 bodies, like, who, what, you know, oh, people in the school system, or people in, uh.
Got it, got it, okay.
Or I think the school superintendent should go, or I have no idea, but something like.
Thousand percent, a thousand percent. I can tell you this, and I don't know if I can share a screen. Am I in a position to share a screen?
I might have to allow you to do that, let's see.
Yeah, there's some important information on the other side of this, uh, this. this Hollywood squares that you all don't have in front of you that I have internalized. Um, one of them is the one-page overview of the workshop and, and, and the outcomes of the workshop. So I think that's something that you all will benefit from having. Um, the other one is a document which is four pages long that says ten steps to hosting Undoer Racism Community Organizing Workshop. And so that's important for you all to have. One thing that I've said in certain spaces that's important, and then I'll share the screen, is that something like this is experienced. So in this kind of a context, as a, as a researcher, qualitative research is more important than quantitative research. Because we're talking about people and personalities and what they felt and what they got out of something. So the debrief would do that. It would give you the qualitative perspective of was it worth people's time? How have they evolved their thinking? And, um, I'll give you a little bit of a spoiler. Um, in my hometown, we had, uh, three workshops going on in October twenty nineteen. Uh, we did them back-to-back within about a two-week window, so it was intense. And, uh, my staff at the time, um, still loved me for it, but they were upset with me and I had to buy them all lunch. There was a certain executive director of a very prominent organization in Rochester that had decades of experience in their particular role. And there was a point in the workshop where we talked about gatekeeping. And the question was asked, who in here considers themselves a gatekeeper? And everyone's hand went up except for this particular person. We spent forty-five minutes trying to help this person come along in the process and understand how dangerous it is if you don't see yourself as a gatekeeper and you have control of an organization. It's important for a secretary to understand that they're a gatekeeper. It's important for a resident to understand that they're a ge- a gatekeeper. It's just that the gate that they keep is different. It might be a different size gate. It might be a different type of gate. It might be a gate in a different part of town, but it's still a gate. Because we control who has access to our banking information, our social security number, access to our children, access to our time. And so when this person finally found out that, that they were a gatekeeper, they broke down and cried. And this is a six-figure, six-figure salary earner. Broke down and cried. They became the biggest advocate for structural and systemic change because they had a paradigm shift moment. So does the superintendent need that in East Hampton? Does a beat cop officer need that in East Hampton? Does a small business owner need that in East Hampton? Does a community organizer? Does this, does a, does a, a city council member? Do staff in City Hall? Do firefighters? Do EMTs? I'd say yes. So let's show you this document, these two documents. Um, the first one I'll share, let's see. If I shared an entire window, what does that get me? Okay. Can you all see my screen right now?
Yes.
So I'm going to come over to this document. And this is the one pager that introduces the People's Institute for Survival Beyond as a national and international collective of anti-racist, multicultural, community organizers and educators. There's a contingency of this group that's been in the Pioneer Valley region for over the last thirty years, twenty years. And they're called UROCK, Undoing Racism Organizing Collective, out of the Springfield area. Um, they're part of this extended family. At the time, they were thirty-nine years old. People's Institute is currently in their forty-first or forty-second year. So this is a little dated with more than two hundred million people having gone through the workshop since nineteen, the nineteen eighties. When it gets down to it, these are the anticipated outcomes of the workshop. The first one being a common definition or understanding of racism and the different forms from individual, institutional, linguistic, and cultural. This common language and analysis for examining racism in the United States because we're not in Kenya, because we're not in Germany, we're in the United States. Understanding one's own connection to institutional racism and how it impacts your own work on your day job, at your school, in your church, pick a place. Understanding why people are poor and the role of institutions in exacerbating institutional racism, making things worse, particularly for poor people and communities of color. Understanding historically where this notion of race and these classifications came about. Understanding how US institutions came to be and who were they actually designed to serve? Because it's not everybody. So when we start talking about the system is broken, no, it's not. It's exactly the way it's designed to be. That's what we're talking about. Understanding how all of us, including white people, are negatively impacted by racism every day, everywhere. So what does that look like? Addressing surface-level assumptions about your work or how your work is or is not affected by racism. Um, developing awareness and understanding about ways to begin undoing it. Because if it was created and produced, it can be dismantled. And as we know, it was created over four hundred years. Like, this isn't like fly-by-night. Um, last two was gaining knowledge about how to be more effective in the work that you do with your various constituencies as the CRC. Your organizations maybe that you work at, that you lead, and in your community, and with your very own family. One of the most difficult things to do as an organizer is to get your own spouse, your own children, your own siblings, your own parents to come to an Undoing Racism Workshop because they remember you way back when. So you really want to talk about hard work? Get your family to buy into what you're doing as the CRC and see how well that goes. And then lastly, your role, understanding your role, the role of community organizing and this idea of building effective multiracial coalitions for change by dismantling, uh, structural and systemic racism. So these are the outcomes of this three days, eighteen hours, six hours a day workshop. The other doc, I won't read it, but the steps are get familiar with the organization and the training. Clarify why you want to do the workshops. Identifying who your constituency is as the CRC. Contacting the People's Institute to say we want to do it, having a preliminary consultation. We're already at step five because I've been organizing these workshops for the last four years now. Accessing organizational finances. The mayor has already committed the thirteen-five. The next one here is setting a workshop date. That is something we can talk about tonight. Meeting the trainers. Once the, the, the date is set in stone, that normally happens about a week before your training. Preparing for the actual workshop. That's all of the registration, promotion, getting people in the room, knowing where the space is going to happen, if it's virtual, having the Zoom set up or whatever. And then lastly, publicizing it. And then you run your workshop. I'll send you both of these documents. And I think the last sweetener I will give you is this publication I wrote last year for the state on equity and recovering from COVID. Why you should care about this forty-eight-page publication is for a couple of reasons. One, it has tools in it that you can use now, like environmental scanning tools. It has in it a template for action planning. So if you said we had a strategic plan with four goals and five priorities under those goals, each of those priorities should be fleshed out into an action plan. Here's a template that you get to use for free ninety-nine. Here's the first part. Here's the, the rest of it. So it gives you a template so you all don't have to figure out what do we need to know before we're ready to take action on the thing that we're doing. And towards the latter part, and sorry to scroll so fast for anybody looking at the recording later. At the end, there's also a template for your strategic plan. So if you all don't have an agreed-upon vision statement, mission statement, operating principles that guide your work as the CRC, some key pillars that kind of give you a direction that the ship is going, goals that roll under those directions, and factors of success, what does success look like? How you're going to measure it yourselves? What assumptions you're making as a body? And what are the actionable strategies that goes into your action plan? These are things that I've agreed to assist you all with fleshing out once you all have a shared analysis of structural and systemic racism and equity in all of its forms. So I know I gave a lot, but this is what I came here to do tonight, to help you all get to making decisions.
Okay. I appreciate all of that.
That was a mouthful, as we say. A mouthful. I mean, it's like, thank you, thank you. And I apologize for being late. I, I was shoveling snow and totally lost track of time. I'm sorry.
Don't do that. It's okay. We are grateful that you are here. And see, this is part of Undoing Racism. We got to get out of that mindset that when someone does something, ooh, I don't want to get in trouble. No, actually, we're honored that you're here.
I was, I was apologizing for being late, that's all. I mean, I am chronically late, but I'm usually not late to our meetings.
Listen to the reframing, Margaret, and this is the teachable moment for all of us. You're not late, you're on time. We're honored you're here. You're not a burden to us. You didn't waste our time. We were socializing before you got here. We're one big happy family. Are we together?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So it sounds like some, we need, this is where we get to the concrete, um, the action steps. I think, so to clarify, we do have a bit of a strategic plan that we've been working on. Some parts we're still fine-tuning in terms of our operationality, in terms of like bylaws and subcommittee work. Uh, but we do have some mostly short-term and a midterm goal. And this, the workshop is our midterm. Like our midterm goal, as in it'll take a few months to, to get there. I believe we'll all in the call that have been here before, uh, found value in the Undoing Racism Workshop. So, uh, what it comes down to is the, the nitty-gritty portion. Some background work is that we've been trying to get our, recently, because we have a change in leadership. Or rather, a step up in, in different leadership. So we're trying to, you know, get out into the community as we're activating our components of the strategic plan. Where was I going with that? So timeline-wise, we're still building up a base of, we're still bu- building visibility and building up a base of people of interest. Um, we did that in person and also have been, have an open survey. So the when would be the question as well as the who. Uh, I think we'll be expanding the who if we want to invite, you know, people in the field of education, ongoing, you know, community, you know. We're hoping that this session has more community members because we're actively reaching out and canvassing for them. Which would make it a little bit different than, you know, a mandated something from the city, but finding people that are actively interested in participating. Um, so that would make this one different. Now, the question is, how, how quickly can we make that happen? I'm not sure, because we're planning on having like these gatherings in the warmer months, say, starting in March. So that would be March, maybe April, maybe May, that we would have enough. And we haven't even planned those out yet, um, so that we would have enough community, um.
Yeah.
Community members over here.
So let's go back. I've been organized.
One, one warmer thing in?
Oh, go for it, go for it.
So my only question is, if we have, if we're having, um, June or July, whenever the fiscal year ends as the cutoff and we're not using our budget of the ten whatever. Um, but rather what the mayor is committed to, could we also extend and to say, maybe it's June, July, like that's our target?
So.
Just wondering, I just thought.
Having been a public sector official for three and a half years, I would say I wouldn't toe that line. And I'll say it because of this. If you got ten thousand dollars now, you have ten thousand dollars now until June thirtieth. If you don't spend it, you lose it. If you spend it, you probably would get another ten thousand going into July first, which means that between now and August first, you would really effectively have twenty thousand dollars instead of trying to hold ten thousand dollars over to the next year. Cause they would, you would just get the same ten thousand dollars you had last year instead of getting twenty. Does that make sense, how that works? So you want to spend it?
Yes, we would like to spend it. Our, my just thinking is, in the timeline of gathering members of the community, if we would have done that before June thirtieth.
I don't normally like to give all my secrets out on recording because then that means everybody gets all my secrets. But I'll say this. Most of the time, if you encumber your expenses, you're fine going into the next year. What do I mean by that? Um, let's take me out of the equation because it could sound like it's being self-serving. So let's say I'm not an issue or, or a factor here. If you had a vendor that you wanted to hire, or, or a couple of vendors to, to, to do an event, and that event wasn't going to happen until, let's say, July twelfth. But the expenses associated with that event were incurred between April and June thirtieth. You could spend your ten thousand dollars before June thirtieth and have your event July twelfth and still not disrupt your budget for next year because you spent it in this fiscal year. The other thing I'll tell you is that, and I see this with clients all over the country that I've worked with, analysis paralysis. We put the cart before the horse. Every time I've done an Undoing Racism Workshop, and this would be my twelfth one, because I'm going through my, uh, I'm sorry, eleventh one, because I'm going through my tenth one next week, from Wednesday through Friday. Every time I've done it, once we had the date, all of that interest in trying to organize people into the space happened after we set our date. And the reason why that's important is because when you have a date, a deadline, that motivates you to take action. Right now, you all are trying to get feedback and input and figure out who needs to be in the room, but you don't have a cutoff to motivate you to work towards a goal.
I have a question, though, before, just, what's your experience? I know that the first Undoing Racism Workshop happened in August of twenty-one. I don't know when in August, but it seems to me July and August are particularly lousy times to have three-day things and for people to give up a summer weekend, you know? So how does that work before?
Well, I've go, I've gone through workshops during the week and I've gone through them that went over the weekends. And the truth is, once you get there, you just have a great experience. And you're like, wow, it didn't even feel like I gave up a weekend. I had a good time. I would say that.
I'm talking about people's willingness to sign up for it.
Oh, people do it when they choose to do it. So think of it like this. Teachers have to do professional development. If this counted as somebody's professional development and they had to do it, they would do it. Also, too, like, it's not like you're going to come to a workshop and just sit for the next three days. Like normally, you're fed those three days, um, at least in person. And so the virtual version, and, and this is more logistical, could be that you allocate a certain amount for, um, people to either use ScrubHub, DoorDash, Uber Eats, or local restaurants being willing to deliver, where folks actually have lunch and breakfast of provided to them, even though they're virtually on the call. If that comes with learning, fellowshipping, laughing, crying, all of those things together as we try to figure out how to address our problems, most people won't say this is a burden. At least that's been my experience.
Okay, I, you know, that, okay, that's fine. That's why I asked the question. Thanks.
And, and now the metrics are looking different. We're coming on, up on time where, you know, masking isn't mandatory, um, it's optional. So is there now option for in-person? Maybe that's a bigger draw than a virtual workshop, which people, you know, we're, we're moving, I, I think we're moving away from.
Thinking.
A pandemic.
Uh, great thinking because if you looked at May-June within the fiscal year, you got warmer weather. Um, I know Massachusetts is not as cold as Rochester because we're right on Lake Ontario. But May-June, if you wanted to do an outdoor, under-the-tent kind of workshop where folks sat in a circle out there, you could actually get away with that. You could actually get away with that and have a good experience and probably get up to 35, 40 people in that workshop. Comfortably.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the only, oh, go ahead.
So if we're opting, I'm thinking like, okay, May-June is when we have a workshop. And then I, although it's, it wasn't the preferred, but is like, what seems to be the best thinking is that we'd have the follow-up debriefs after that time. So that would look like. Oh, I'm sorry. So, okay, so that would look like May, May-June, there's those three days. And then we would need to hash out a time, like, because it seems like the tools component is, and use of tools. And is like a, a big portion. Because right now, Margaret's wearing her Do Nothing t-shirt.
I don't think, have you seen my t-shirt that I found?
Hilarious, I need to see that t-shirt.
No, I'm the one wearing it, right?
No, no, I'm not wearing it. It's, it's all great. I will, I'll run downstairs and get it, but I found it. When did I find it? Oh, I found it after the training. And, and I thought, oh, this is just so perfect. And, um, like, I'm gonna go get it right now.
Right. So while she's getting that, like, I don't want to be in the stage where everyone is trapped in the do-nothing state. Like, like, we get to the point where we have the follow-ups and do tools, so that there's two components. This is me talking, I cannot deliberate on choices, I'm just one person. But that's what my thinking is. If we have an in-person event and then follow up with those debriefs that are also in-person, and get to the tools component. So.
I like that, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll give another level of nuance before we ask Emily what her question is. I think that the folks who've already gone through the workshop could be at least added to an email distribution list. So that they can begin communicating with one another, even just to be connected. And that could become the beginning of your alumni network of this training. And once the rest of you go through the workshop, you get added to that distribution list. That stuff doesn't have to wait until May, June to happen. You can start organizing that, because this is all about organizing, right? Even CRC is trying to become organized, right? And so I think that identifying, you know, what's the best day of the month for everyone who's already gone through this? To start meeting once a month virtually, or every two months virtually. Getting a contact distribution list together, maybe a Google group. I recommend personally a Google group that, that CRC manages. Or the members of CRC who's already gone through Undo Racing, Undo Racing Workshop manage. Because we don't want to steal the thunder for Yon and Dr. Even here, right? They haven't gone through it yet. But those folks can start getting together to just talk. And they can get together with their Do Nothing shirts on and, and just reflect together before they actually get to a debrief. The other thing is, I love that, just do nothing. The other thing is, um. Love it. The other thing is, we set up an alumni network immediately after our three workshops back-to-back. And we developed a strategic plan for the alumni network. I'm happy to give that group, once established, the word document of our strategic plan that has a mission, a vision, priorities for organizing. And let them begin to self-organize and start talking. And then of course, ultimately, folks may want to organize around cannabis and organize around education and whatever else. But at least you all would have influence over that, and some of them might want to align with you all later on what CRC is trying to accomplish. So I think those are two trainings that you all can get running at the same time. Planning for a workshop and subsequent debriefs, where you encumber your budget so that it's not lost after June 30th. And encouraging the two members from CRC who's gone through the workshop to start organizing the other alumni into a distribution list. And, and a group that begins to meet maybe once a month, once every two months. That's it. Emily. Emily has her hand up.
Right.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Um, did Rebecca want to say something real quick?
Yeah, quickly, you mentioned sending a list of attendees. I can't find that I've got that from you. Maybe Myra has it?
Could be, let me just.
I would, I would just want to make sure, because my.
I know that I have. I, I was clarifying with the mayor, let me see where I can find that. I don't know the date. I do have it somewhere.
Well, you look, um, I'll ask my question. Okay, um. So, um, I liked how Myra distilled it down to, we still need to figure out when, we still need to figure out who. And then we, partially, we have to figure out how, meaning like how we're gonna pay for it. We figured out why, we know why, and we know where, basically virtual, or it can be in person, but plenty of places in East Hampton. I'm a little confused how a debrief could hold 75 people.
Oh, it does. It doesn't have to be a single debrief, Emily, it would be.
How long is a debrief?
I'm thinking, so a couple ways that, that they can do it. When I first went through the training, I attended a debrief formally done by the People's Institute. It was a whole day in New York City. I think we're doing a lighter version of that, not a whole day. My initial thought was maybe a two-hour debrief, 90 minutes to two hours. And if you had 75 people, I'd probably break that out over three or four debriefs, in person or virtually. Either which way doesn't matter, because you're right, 75 people is a lot to bring into a room to have rich interaction. Or useful interaction, for sure.
Okay. Well, um, it's a little awkward. Like, well, I don't know, I, I just, I just feel like the debrief, I don't know how Margaret and Rebecca feel with having gone through it. But it sort of seems like the debrief should happen as soon as possible. And I don't think we can guarantee that we can deal with all the money stuff really fast. I don't know, just like, you know, which goes first, you know?
I will tell you.
Same, to, to delay the debrief anymore. And we also have to remember, like, the mayor is gonna want to go to the debrief, if she was at any of them. And some of the other, some of the other big people are gonna want to go to the debrief. So the schedule really might kind of be up to them and not us.
So I want you all to recognize how much power you all have as a body. You were set up for a reason. If you said, okay, Mayor, we want to do a debrief for everyone who's already gone through it in mid-April. She would make herself available as long as she knew the date, as long as her scheduler knew the dates in advance. I think that that's how you'd play that. I know Chief Alberti went through the workshop, he would want to go through that. But I think as long as you're not trying to say, let's do a debrief in two weeks. Nobody's that important that they can't be available two, three months from now. Like, let's just be very clear, you know, we're all busy, I guess. But no one of us is so important that three months out from now, we can't find two hours to come together. We really care about the people we say we serve. But I do, I do appreciate your point though, Emily, that to make people who've already waited six to nine months wait almost closer to a year, that is, that is, you know, a thing, right? I will tell you, out of those nine workshops that I facilitated, not all of those people have had the opportunity to go through a debrief. Because it's not a part of the original workshop. And that's the case with most trainings. If you went to an implicit bias workshop, there is no debrief.
Right.
It's, you get what you get, and you move on and decide what you want to do with it. Margaret, Myra?
I was, I was just gonna say to Emily, you know, one of the things, now that we even have any money, I see you as much more conservative than I am in how one sees how money flows. And the mayor's already committed to this, she needs to also spend it by July 1st. So this, um, and, and we came up with who was gonna be on subcommittees, and I was the only one to be on the finance one. I think I bring some skills to that, but in any case, I don't think you need to worry about the money. The money is, I think time is really our more significant issue. Time to move versus, uh, you know, that's, we just have to figure out the, the schedule.
Right, absolutely.
My follow-up.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the debriefs, you know, like I said, they'll happen when they happen. But that's something that would be from URO, UROC? Or People's Institute, or?
We have, we have not engaged UROC yet to connect them to you all, because you're not organized yet in East Hampton around Undoing Racism. That's part of what I'm hoping to do with you all. These debriefs were debriefs I was willing to do for you, with you, because of my familiarity and intimacy with the material. To have the People's Institute formally do a debrief is gonna be more money than you have. And more time. But I'm willing to help organize either which way.
Does that mean that you would facilitate the debrief? The, the two, like, two hours, two hours, two hours, for example, in a given day or a few days? So you would do that? Okay, and, and you've been at those two, you were at our training, but also the previous one too, right?
I helped run them.
Oh, great, fabulous. I, I mean, I know that in ours, but I just didn't know about the first one.
Oh, no, no, I mean, like, like literally, I was one of the additional trainers in the room, like, I, I covered some of the material.
Okay, great, so, all right. Yeah, and UROC is, I think, just, so we know they're there, we, we don't need to, we don't need to do anything except take the ball and run with it, actually. I think.
Correct.
Dr. Campbell is our ball, and we're going to run with him.
That's a new analogy, that's a new one.
Right?
Okay, I have, I have another question, but I'm also, um, I guess, I guess, to the CRC, are we gonna be meeting after Dr. Campbell signs off tonight? Or are we meeting on March 23rd to talk about all this?
Quite honestly, it, I think, for time, for time sake, I'm. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain, because we didn't really have that. But it seemed, I kind of feel like part of it is gonna be some subcommittee work. We have the forum folks, who I don't know who that is, and then also finance. So it looks like, I don't know if we all, if everyone has committed to hanging on to the call longer. But definitely we need to discuss how we can get things rolling. Also, Dr. Campbell, yes?
I want to make life easier for you all. You're not paying for the Undoing Racism Workshop, the mayor is. Make a decision on what month you want to have the workshop in. Let me go to Darryl from the People's Institute to say what dates are available in those months. And then let me email them to Myra or Myra and Emily. And allow you all to confer on which ones you want to ask them to put a temporary hold on. Because that would get us in the process. If you're waiting until March 23rd to have this conversation, you lose the opportunity to do something in May-June. The, the separate conversation that you all should have in your committees is how you want to allocate your budget to these debriefs and follow-on workshops. And that's a separate track, that's not as time-sensitive, because it's me saying, hey, I'm willing to do it.
So would you facilitate the debriefs of contacting the people on the list that you submitted to Myra? Of all the participants, would, would you facilitate that as well, the organizing, or would we be organizing that?
I would partner with you on it, and we would have to figure out what scope of work would you all be responsible for, and what scope I would be responsible for.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm just confused, because I thought earlier you said, you, you didn't know how much the debrief would cost. That we'd have to have a discussion about how much it would cost. But then you also said, you just said that if the People's Institute did, did the debrief, it would cost more money than we have.
Let me help you, because I appreciate your sentiment, but I want to be clear. You all don't have enough money to pay for my time, so I'm volunteering a portion of my time. My rate is $350 an hour for my time. And there's other costs associated with my time. I'm not gonna charge you my rate. So if you all said, yeah, we have $10,000, but we really only, because we have other things we want to do, we want to spend $3,500 of it with you, Dr. Campbell, how much can you do with that? I would have to sit here and think, would I be willing to do four debriefs? And all of the work that goes into that, and that's just debriefing the workshop for $3,500? I haven't decided that that's something I would be willing to do. And I've already articulated, you need more than a debrief, because there's things that aren't covered in a workshop that you all would benefit from having. I also mentioned I would help you all organize your alumni network. How many hours would that take? How tech savvy are you all in setting up Google Groups? And all of the things with that, I don't know yet, but very quickly, $10,000 is not enough. So this is why I said I don't know how much it's gonna cost, because there's so many components. And I don't know what your requirements are yet, to be able to give a response.
I'd also like to simplify it for everyone too, is that, for example, organizing the alumni groups, I think that's gonna happen in the next fiscal year. I mean, if we were to pull off a training and even the, uh, you know, the, the debriefing. Glory hallelujah, you know, we just, we, we can get to the next part next. I think it's getting confusing, it seems to me, and overwhelming, you know? So, for example, if we look at a calendar now, and we, well, two things. First, I think is, when do we need to talk about this more? And, uh, it seems like March is way too, our, our, you know, our meeting right now in the end of March is way too far away. We do have something scheduled for March 4th, is that correct? For us to meet each other. It's not a, it's not, we're, we're gonna talk about ourselves. But I don't know what we want to do about meeting sooner. Or do we want to talk about it then? Because the entire committee is here, the entire CRC is here right now.
So perhaps we can get, we can take some baby steps that have to deal with the concrete things. And it seems like the debriefs are, although important, are making things a little bit cloudy. So we know we would like to do a workshop. Perhaps we can just, not that I have a calendar, but think of sometime in, oh, when did we say, June?
I think we should come up with dates in May and June, because we have to see when the People's Institute is available.
All right, so we can think, oh, but that's my family reunion in Virginia, oh, well.
Away from that.
Don't say those dates.
And I'm on the programming committee, uh-oh. Um, so anyway, so I'll think of some dates in May and June. Toward the end of May, toward June, we're thinking an in-person event, at least, I hope, right? And so then we would need to see, like, when Nanituck is open. When does Nanituck open? I've forgotten.
April 1st, the park opens.
Okay, so.
They have civilians.
Yes.
In case it rains, it's all very nice.
Yes, so.
It's a big park, Nanituck is a big park.
Right, so. I'll ask Rebecca, maybe you can look at your calendar, I know you're savvy, and I can, I'm still charging my phone.
So you, what do you need to know that, what the?
Like, can we throw out some dates for just a workshop? No, we can't.
June, can you, can you see if that works?
You got it. I would say, if you're looking at the last two weeks of May through the first week of July for it to actually happen. I would ask them, between that eight-week or seven-week window, what's available, what's open on the calendar? And they would then tell me that these are the only blocks of time that we're not able to do a workshop. And then I can tell you, in this eight-week period, there's the equivalent of five weeks that you can choose from to do your workshop.
So that's.
And then you all pick from there.
That, that sounds like, that sounds like our plan.
That'd be great.
So we're looking at mid-May, so for example, May 15th to, well, I don't think we want July 1st, but is that where, to June 30th?
I think that's smart. And I'm looking at my calendar now, just so I can get a sense, so we're talking between May 16th and June 30th?
Yeah.
And technically, if it ended up being a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it could be the 29th of June through the July 1st, technically, it could be. And it could even start on that Thursday, the 30th, and go Thursday, the 30th, July 1st, and July 2nd. I mean, I wouldn't do that, because people are gonna celebrate the 4th of July on July 2nd.
Yeah.
But, but the point of the matter is, between July 1st back to May 16th, is a decent window of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 weeks. I'm sure you can get a block of three dates in seven weeks.
Okay, great. And then, the second component we need is like, I wrote this down somewhere. So then we need, oh, where is that registration contract booth? Um, so then I guess that's when we need our lovely Margaret, who's the sole person on finance, to like, get, uh, and I guess it would be-
I need a check-
An estimate, but a bid, so that then we can request that of the mayor, and then also figure out those, those avenues, because so far, we've just bought some cookies.
Right, we bought $68 worth of cookies, and, and, and we don't know, it's our first big expenditure. So, I, yes, I will, I would, I will figure out, I can contact the mayor's office in the beginning of the week to even set that ball in motion. That we're gonna need that money.
Great.
Okay, and what do we need to do? So I think we need to get more information.
Is this like, an official vote, um, Rebecca?
Well, do we have, you want, does someone wanna make a motion?
Okay.
So, Jan is making a motion, and this is a motion to-
What is the motion to, to secure a vendor for Undoing Racism Workshop? And seek proposed dates for the workshop to take place between May 16th and July?
30th? Or June 30th?
June 30th, I had to correct the first time.
Oh, is this second? Okay.
And, um, can we empower, because we don't meet as a committee right away, can we empower the forum, forum subcommittee? Which I believe, based on my notes here, I believe the forum subcommittee is Margaret and Myra.
And you.
And me. So can we-
Is it still Jan? Too, or?
Oh, yeah, that's right, you were here, sorry.
Yeah, I missed that meeting.
I think he put you on all the committees.
Yes, sure, everything.
I spoke with Jan-
I, I just, I just sent you a, a email, Margaret.
Oh, you did?
And I spoke with you and put you on all the committees. Actually, Jan suggested top three were outreach, although I think we might already have a lot of people on that. See, that might be too many people on there.
Right.
Bylaws, which I think we'd be happy to have them on bylaws. And then we were saying, maybe onboarding or finance. So, right, right now, Margaret's by herself on finance, um, onboarding, we've got Myra and, uh-
So, just, just to respect everyone's time, did we, did we pass the motion?
Well, we were kind of talking about the motion, so what I'm wondering is if the motion to, um, to ask, uh, the People's Institute for their availability to, um, to host an Undoing Racism event. I'm just wondering if we would like to authorize the forum subcommittee to confirm the date, once we have it. Can I, can I edit your motion in that regard, Jan? And if that's a good motion, then we could have a second. But I mean, I, I would second it, if that's your motion.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
Oh, so, and I'm supposed to read the roll call? Ah, sorry. Okay, so we are now gonna take a vote on the, the motion, um, to secure, no, to seek the People's Institute, dates from this People's Institute, um, for Undoing Racism. So we'll take a vote. Um, Rebecca Prassa.
Yes, I should probably tell you, Myra, it's Prassa with no initial R.
Say Prassa.
Yeah, that's alright, though, but yes, whatever you said, it's yes.
Thank you, please let me know if I mess up anybody else's name. Emily Burton.
Yes.
Margaret Kirsten.
Yes.
Jan Norman.
Yes.
Epineser Akofuruma.
Yes.
Myra Oyedemi, yes.
So just so, because I have my list of, um, committee members, is there any committee you'd like to be on, Jan? So I can write it in so nicely?
No problem. Uh, right now, like I said, I think because some others were taken, uh, I was looking at the finance and bylaws.
Okay, I just wrote you on both of those.
Alright.
And actually, um, there's only one person on onboarding, as far as I saw, and that was Myra. So, I think Jan would be good on onboarding, since he's been here from the beginning, too, you know? Do you agree, Myra?
Sure.
But I don't know if he can be on three committees.
I mean, it's, I, I don't, you, we can, we can hash that out, there's like, a form, um, and whoever, I imagine there is gonna be some double up. I wanna respect Dr. Campbell's time, because I know he doesn't wanna get into the nitty-gritty's of who's doing what on the committee. And also, I'll release you if you need to be released. Um, I don't know what happened to my agenda. I went through my email. Um, so is that?
I think-
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, we have-
Nothing else.
And then the, you, the forum subcommittee, where we left off, is gonna review the dates that we get back from Dr. Campbell.
Okay.
And yes, and that's where we'll, we'll leave it right now.
Right.
But we need to also, maybe, I don't know if Dr. Campbell wants to stay for this, but we need to figure out if we wanna meet before, uh, March, whenever that was, that our next meeting is.
Forum, and so, forum and finance will need to meet before that.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever date it is, it can't be a Tuesday for me.
Right, it's the 23rd, so, um, right now, so, we're looking at the 2nd or the 9th, I will not be here on the 16th, but the 2nd or the 9th are two Wednesdays, the 1st to Wednesdays in March.
Okay, uh, Dr. Do you think by then you'll have a date?
By, by the 2nd week in March?
No, by Wednesday, the 2nd of March, or the 9th of March, yeah.
I will, I will probably have a date by Mon, a, a, a set of dates that are available between Monday and Tuesday.
Great, okay.
Great.
So, why don't, why don't we, oh, we have a big project due on the 8th, so, um-
For what it's worth, I don't know, are you all doing in-person things yet, or no? You're, as a body, you're not?
So far, we haven't.
No, and the town hall hasn't opened up either for that.
Got it. Well, just for your clarification, I'm coming to the Springfield area on the 10th, and I'm leaving either on the 12th or the 13th. If there's some value in connecting with any one or two of you, or all of you, while I'm in town, I just want you to know that I'm willing to make myself available.
Okay.
To continue these discussions.
That sounds good.
Okay.
That could be good, for example, for the forum subcommittee. When we meet to discuss business in a quorum, then we have to make it public, so that's, uh, that's just a bit cumbersome.
Right.
Make that-
For a forum subcommittee, if I could make it the 9th, that would be helpful for me. Unless I-
Are you, oh, in terms of the, the, are you talking about our next meeting, our next CRC meeting?
No, 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 I'm just talking about the subcommittee meeting.
On the 9th?
Which is Margaret, Rebecca, Myra. Does that work?
Yeah, sure.
Well, let's say this, if the whole committee wants to meetings in March, so that we can vote, so that if the committee as a whole wants to meet on the 9th, too, I don't know how flexible your day is, do you want to have the forum subcommittee still meet the same day?
No.
No.
Okay.
So what, what time would you wanna meet on the 9th, Myra?
It's a Wednesday, um-
I know I cannot meet from 2 o'clock on, on that day.
Yeah.
I can meet in the evening, but I can't meet, uh, like-
Evening is fine. Evening is fine, I think we can do this via email, like, too. So, the 9th works for me, um, or, or maybe it is that we wanna have it on the 6th. Sorry, like, maybe we wanna meet on the 2nd, so that you can have another meeting as a committee on the 9th, I'm not sure, but-
Are people available on the 2nd?
Can you switch to yourself?
You're not, Emily, you're not, okay.
Okay, yeah, because I don't, one, I don't wanna put too much on my plate, I have a big project. Oh, I can't.
Hey, I didn't hear what you said, Evan.
You are still leaving?
Yeah.
Do you also need me?
No, sorry, so, thank you so much for your time, I know you didn't need to hear, we'd love to see you in town, and you're around and available. Thanks so much for coming, we look forward to working from, with you, and-
We'll listen for those dates.
Likewise.
And hopefully, a- again, I don't seem to have that list of people.
I just emailed it to you, Rebecca.
Oh, you did, okay, great, wonderful, thank you very much.
Take care, bye, guys.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye now.
Okay, yes, so for, for me, I don't wanna pressurize myself too much by meeting two times. I know I have a major project that's due on the 8th, so if I had to start ruling with the subcommittee meeting, like, I, I just not gonna have time.
I have a major project on the, on the, um, 8th, too, so.
So, the question is, um-
Be 60, finally.
So, are we, we're not gonna meet on the 2nd, because Emily can't meet, correct?
Right, right.
Yes.
And, um, well, I, okay, and then the 9th, we might meet in the evening, which we talked about. You wanna meet on the 9th?
So, would we like a whole committee on the 9th?
Can the whole committee meet on the 9th?
Yes, available, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, and we, we wanna talk about the forum, that's our agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can have information about how to get, how to procure the money, and, um, I think, you know, yeah, we'll have a date even by, you know, I mean, I'll just say we're gonna get a date, but... And then we also, I think, the, to discuss who the participants that we're going to invite, or, and the rationale for those particular people.
Okay.
And also, are Jan and Emily and you, Myra, and, uh, Dr. Evan going to be? I assume the four of you are gonna attend the next, that next training.
Sure.
So you take four spots, yes?
Which one? Oh, for Undoing Racism?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the four of you are, you, so you'll have an important investment in when it happens.
Right, end of our respondents, I think most of them said that they were, oh, my internet is unstable, were interested in attending, I haven't looked at it very well. Um, I think some of our action steps is to, like, go through that, to figure out who we can invite and who to follow up with. Um, so I'm not sure if that-
And also Emily's, Emily's, uh, youth, youth coalition that you, I mean, that, that seems like a good-
So, I feel like outreach should probably meet beforehand, whoever that is. Maybe Rebecca, you can help us with the notes of who's on what, though it seems like outreach needs to maybe go through.
Okay, you know, here-
Of outreach.
So, you want me to type those up and just give them to, send it out, so Rebecca doesn't have to do every goddamn thing around here?
That'd be fabulous, Margaret.
Feel good to delegate, I'm just-
If you are willing to do that, that would be fabulous.
I'm giving away when we made a mistake.
Okay, perfect.
So that meeting on the 9th, still at 6?
Yes.
Oh, 6, okay.
So, on the 9th at 6 o'clock, okay, maybe what we'll do is, we'll, we'll just, maybe, uh, announcements or whatever, firm up the committees after Margaret emails me. Okay, and then, we will, um, we will discuss dates for the Undoing Racism, and I think another important item has to do with reviewing lists of people, right? The ones who are interested in it, the ones that are on the list that Dr. Campbell provided, and that'll help us think about who, who took it and who should take it, right? Does that sound like a thing?
Right.
And I don't know if it costs money, but what I recall from the first training, well, the training I went to was, uh, that people who had gone to the training could always come back again, and again, and again, and again, and I don't know if it costs money.
You know, I, I had the impression, like you, right, that if we went to a training again, it wouldn't cost money. So I'm a little confused about the debrief costing money, but hey, you know, maybe it depends.
It's a different process, and I think there's not that chunk of change that goes to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's all a little cloudy when it comes to the finances of that part, so, um-
I, I will take care of that.
So, yeah, for the finance committee, right, if the mayor, if the mayor will, in this fiscal year, fund the workshop, that's great. And then, the CRC may even do additional things.
Right, and you have a lot more cookies to buy.
Yeah, we got some cookies.
We still need to think about, this is what I was saying, the outreach committee, whoever that is, we should probably meet to start discussing, um, the people who filled out the forms, who would like to host a gathering of neighbors. So that actually needs to take place prior to our workshop.
So, question, Dr. Evan, I have you on the outreach committee, correct? And the digital communications committee?
Yes, these two, yep.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, ooh, oh, shame. Okay, so, Ty was supposed to be at practice a half hour ago.
Hmm, yeah. So you have to go.
Uh, he can, well, you know what, it's okay, he can survive. Oh, he says mom.
Okay, well, you know, I, I do also need to go, so, I-
So, it sounds like we have our action steps, we're gonna be meeting, we'll get in contact, we'll email. So, can, is there a motion for us to adjourn?
Yes. Everybody's second.
Alright.
Alright.
See you soon.
Yeah, we, we should do a roll call, but-
Okay, Rebecca Prassa.
Agreed, adjourned, yeah.
Uh, Emily Burton.
Yes.
Margaret Kirsten.
Yes.
Jan Norman.
Yes.
Epineser Akofuruma.
Yes.
Myra Oyedemi, yes.
Okay, bye-bye, I'm kicking everybody out.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.